Good evening, everybody. I'm Call Six Investigates' Kara Kenny. I'm a reporter with WRTV, and you are joining us live for the candidate forum for the Northwest Hendrix School Corporation. Joining us now are Abby Morgan and David Pyatt, who are both running against incumbent and board president Jim DiAgostino, as well as Joe Brooks. He is challenging incumbent Craig Peoples. Now, we did invite Jim and Craig to join us, but they did not respond. However, we are extremely grateful to the incumbents for joining us tonight and talking about all of these key issues that are really important to the community. Now, I just wanted to let you know that all of the questions, or most of the questions that I'm about to ask, are questions that were submitted by members of the community. Now, the current school board has faced criticism over the past year for how it has handled sexual misconduct allegations involving a teacher and a student, which is one of the reasons why this race is so important. All three of you candidates have told me that you feel that the community is divided, and all three of you are working on ways that you can bring the community back together. Let's first start off with introductions. Just tell me a little bit about yourself and why you're running. We'll start with Abby.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here virtually, and I want to thank Channel Six for hosting this opportunity for our community to hear a little bit more from all of us. So I'm Abby Morgan, and I have three children that attend school in this district, and they are in 3rd grade, 5th grade, and 9th grade. My husband and I green farm in Pittsboro and the surrounding areas. Outside of the farm, my husband also works at Hendrick's Power, and we raise a small cow calf herd and sell freezer beef locally. I am a registered nurse, and I'm currently working as the Director of Health Information Services, Case Management, and Social Services at Withham Hospital in Lebanon. We attend a North Salem Christian church. Our boys are very active in school and sports. They're also active in forage and the occasional junior rodeo, so that keeps us very busy. And I'm just excited to be here and about this opportunity to serve and give back to a community that I love and that has given so much to me and my family.
Joe, you're up.
All right. As Kara mentioned, my name's Joe Brooks. I am... My wife and I, with our family, live in North Salem, and I've been a resident of this community for just over 17 years now. So it's been a little bit. My wife is a lifelong member of the community, so I married in, but this place truly is home to me. That is for sure. So we've got three kids. One's in college. We've got a sophomore, and we have an 8th grader. And my sophomore and 8th grader are both pretty involved in sports and youth group, and just kind of constant craziness. My wife and I joke all the time that we just high-five when we pass each other in the hallway, or we wave at each other as we're driving past, as we're taking kids here and there. So things are getting busy. So I work as an electrical project estimator and project manager for an electric contractor based here locally. So that keeps me fairly busy through the day, and my wife is an x-ray tech. She works for... she runs the hospital, and also the school here in North Salem. She is an instructional assistant. So she stays busy.
All right. Thank you so much. And Dave, your last but not least.
I'm David Pyatt, and I'm a Marine veteran. I was a police officer for 17 years. And I have two daughters. I'm a single father, and my youngest Brenna is in 1st grade in Pittsboro Schools. And my oldest Reagan, which she's going to kill me for saying that because she told me not to mention her name. But as any good father, it's my job to embarrass her. So she's in 5th grade. They're both in cheer right now. And I'm running for school board because of... They're a big motivation for me to run for school board. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Now, first of all, just tell me about what do you think is your biggest strength and how will you use that on the school board? We'll start with Dave.
My biggest strength is to be able to analyze the situation and come up with a solution and tell you what I really think. A lot of people, anybody that knows me, will say that whatever I say, I mean. And there's a good and bad to that, obviously. But what you can say is, at the end of the day, you know where I stand. And I think I'll bring a no-politics attitude to this and communicate openly with you.
Joe, what about you?
You know, I... My wife actually asked me this, and she gave me a good answer, too. And I can... I'll incorporate a little bit of that into this. But you know, my strength is I'm a problem solver. I like to sit back. I kind of, you know, like Dave said, he analyzes, and I do the same thing. I like to take a little bit of time. I'm not the best with knee-jerk decision-making. It's never been my strong suit. This position is, you know, really plays well to somebody that can sit back and analyze and come up collectively with a decision. And you know, my wife, she made a comment. She said, "You know, you're just not... You're not the kind of person that sits back and complains about issues. You go out and try to make something work." So I'm a fixer. You know, I fix things. That's what I did for a living for a long time. That's what I'm going to try to do here. So you know, collaboratively, I think that we can make that happen.
Abby, what's your biggest strength, and how are you going to use that if you are elected?
I think my biggest strength that would make me a successful school board member is really what makes me successful at work. I'm very thorough. Once I commit to do something, I'm going to make it my business to learn everything I need to know before I make that decision. Also, I think that my connections in the community. I'm involved in lots of things with my kids, and I think that that makes me approachable and accessible to many people, and that, you know, my beliefs will reflect a lot of the people in your community.
Thank you so much, Abby. And what do you think is the most important role of a school board member in Indiana, and what would you do to fulfill that role? We'll start with Joe this time.
Okay. So I'm actually glad you asked this. I think our most important role is ensuring safeguarding everyone that walks through the doors of that school or steps on the grounds of that school. And you know, I believe there's an order to that. I believe that the students, staff, administrators, in that order, are the ones that are, you know, most important in this scenario. They, you know, they are the ones that are there all the time, and we need to set up parameters and ensure the safety of them every day when they're there, and even, you know, even at events. You know, we... There needs to be a code setup that we abide by and that we enforce. And you know, it needs to be unwavering.
Abby, what about you?
Yeah, so I can echo that. I mean, I think that, you know, the job of the school board is obviously to hire. And we want to attract and retain talented people to work with our children and make sure our kids are getting a good education, make sure that our children are safe. That's what the people of this community want to know, is that their children are safe and that they're getting a great education. And we need to make sure there's policy in place that does that, protect their children, and make sure that students are held accountable for following those policies, and that we have a good transparent hiring process, and just making sure, you know, we use the information given to us from administration, and then, you know, apply, you know, good reason and morals to make good decisions that are the best for our kids.
What about you, Dave?
Well, I think the most important thing as far as a board member's concerned is to oversee the superintendent and the policy, and make sure that every policy that comes by us or that we create or that is created, and any decision a superintendent makes, his vision, to make sure that that policy works in the classroom with the teacher and student. Everything revolves around that, and that's what I want to ensure that we analyze and look at and make sure that's happening with any decision.
Well, you just brought up teachers, so let's talk about teachers. You know, the Red for Ed Day, you know, there were lots of protests and marches with teachers who are concerned about a number of issues. We know that teachers at Northwest Hendrix start at the salary of $44,000 a year. Can you talk about any thoughts on the needs of teachers or the role of a school board when it comes to teachers and their concerns? We can start with Abby.
Yeah, so our teachers, especially with what's going on right now with COVID-19, are being asked to do a lot. And I know teachers that are working all day at the school. They have kids of their own, and then they go home and they have to work, you know, until late hours for this working online, and we need to support our teachers. I know from experience, we have awesome giving selfless teachers in this community. I've experienced them with my kids. And we need to attract and retain talent like that here in the district. I'm not an expert on the financial piece. I would love to make it so that we can attract and retain these teachers. I think that there's a way to do it. I think that we have to be fiscally responsible, and we have to, you know, be careful with education budget and make sure that our money is going to the right place in support of these teachers. It's very important to me.
Dave, what about you? Thoughts on teachers, teacher salaries, and their concerns?
Well, yeah, Red for Ed, that's one thing they reported, is that the average teacher spends almost $500 out of pocket per year on supplies. A third of the educators have part-time second jobs, third jobs even. So to me, though, the biggest thing that I want to change when I get in there is make sure that the teacher voice is heard, especially when it comes to policy and curriculum. For instance, when they spent all this time getting online going for our students, and they have to teach a class in the school, they were told that they have to do both. So that's almost two jobs. So they're... I think what I want to change is that... Did anybody ask them that? They spent $90,000 to hire a curriculum coordinator. Did anybody ask the teachers? We need to go to the front lines, which is our teachers, and ask them what they need to do the job, and quit telling them from the top down what they need to do.
And we have a question from Heather. Thank you, Dave. Sorry. We have a question from Heather. She wants to know if this is going to be recorded for later view. It will be recorded. It will be posted to the WRTV Facebook page. We are getting several questions live here from people in the community that are asking about mandated reporters. And for those of you who are watching that aren't familiar with the term mandated reporter means that all of us in Indiana are required to report allegations of suspected child abuse or neglect. That is our duty as citizens of Indiana. As I said in my opening comments, that this school board, the current school board, has faced criticism for how it handled those allegations. The viewers that are watching right now want to know, how would you handle mandated reporters that have not done their job when it comes to reporting of misconduct? We'll start with Dave.
Well, if you're familiar in the community, I'll tell you what I did, is I did report. I'm familiar with it, meaning that if you suspect any abuse or neglect, you are a mandated reporter. And no matter what your position is in the school, if you're an adult, you're a mandated reporter. And what I did was I reported, and in fact, the bosses, the administration, tried to cover that up. And so had I not reported, there's a good chance we still wouldn't have even known there'd be this going on. So I'm going to hold our feet to the fire on that. There's one thing we cannot tolerate in a school, and that's any abuse or cover-up of abuse of a student.
Joe, what do you think?
I agree wholeheartedly with Dave. I also think that, you know, it was a lack, and it was a complete failure on our corporation's leadership, that education on the reporting... The teachers did not know that they were mandated to report that. The staff didn't know. And it doesn't matter, like what you mentioned, what position you hold. It does not matter. You know, I have heard people say that it's, you know, customary and it's respectful that you, you know, go talk to your boss and you let them know, whoever your superior is, that you're going to do this. You actually don't have to do that. Now, you should inform them, "Hey, I'm getting ready to make a phone call. There was something I saw." Okay? They can't stop you, and it's not anything that, you know... Anyone here, I know in this group of people, I've talked to them, you know, we all feel very strongly with this. And this is a frustrating point, and it's the one where I said the trust was taken out of this community. And that is what divided the community right there, was the trust has been gone, is gone. And we've got to make sure that the teachers are educated, and they all understand, and the staff, all the way, you know, maintenance people, everyone understand what is the proper protocol for reporting.
Abby, what are your thoughts on mandated reporter, and how would you handle someone that didn't follow that?
Well, I work with social services at the hospital, and I know what mandated reporting is. Obviously, if a staff, teacher, or any position of staff member of the school thought that there was any abuse going on, then that needs to be reported. And if that did not happen, I would think that people know that they have to report that, and working with children, that they would have to report that. If education is needed to make sure that people are aware of that, then that definitely needs to be in place. But if somebody did not report an allegation of child abuse, then I think that there should have been disciplinary action.
Talk about communication. The current school board has been criticized because it has recently removed public comment from its board meetings. Joe, what do you think about that, and would you do anything differently if you're elected?
Well, I'll be straight up. I'm much like Dave. I will tell you exactly what I'm thinking when I'm thinking it. The very first thing I will address is having a person that is a mouthpiece for the board to speak on the board's behalf. I think that instills a huge distrust between the voters in our community, people in our community that placed us there to look out for their interests. So that right there, first and foremost, is going to have to be addressed and answered to as to why that was the option that was chosen. Second thing is, even if it's a situation much like the one that we just talked about, it is going to carry some sensitivity that cannot be discussed in a public platform or even outside of the investigative walls for that topic. I understand that. I get that. I know everybody here gets that. But that doesn't mean that you cannot give the community the respect that they deserve to look them in the eye and explain to them exactly why you can't talk about that. Tell them why. Don't sit silent. Don't, you know, sitting there shaking your head when the community's getting upset. I've mentioned in the past, silence is maddening, and that's what's happened. The community got very upset and continues to be upset today because they are not even getting the respect of a, "Hey, guys, we understand you're hurting. We're hurting too. We simply cannot talk about this. You know, we're going to have to move on to the next subject." And that's the way it should have been addressed. And I really feel that, you know, even at this point, that could still be done.
Abby, we've spoken before. You feel in many ways similar to Joe on this topic, right?
Yes, I do. And I think the public comment portion of the board meeting is one of the rare opportunities the public has to voice their concerns to the board and their opinions to the board. And I do think taking that away is wrong. I wasn't there when our current board made the decision to do that. And I don't know exactly what information went into that choice. But I do feel that the time for public comment and discussion is very important, and that we have to increase the transparency of our board and the communication between the board and the community.
And just so viewers know, if they're not aware, we have tried talking to the board numerous times. We've requested numerous sit-down interviews. We've tried going up to the board president at board meetings, and we have had no luck in connecting with them in that way. And so, Dave, what's your response on this one regarding communication and the elimination of public comment?
Well, to me, it's a simple issue. As far as... They're going by the minimum state standard of the fact that a board meeting... They are right in the fact that a board meeting is for the public to view the meeting. That is how it's set up. It's not for the public to have a say in the meeting. However, that's the minimum standard. Why wouldn't you want to hear from the public? Because when you sit in that seat, you are the community. So if you don't want to hear from them, it means you think you have all the answers. What I would do is, they need to change the board policy. I would change the board policy that during any action portion of the board meeting, that when there's discussion time, that they open it up to the public, that the public has a chance. Put it in policy that it has to be done in a board meeting.
Thank you so much. Let's talk finances and budget along these lines. The school board has faced criticism, not just for the lack of communication, but also the finances involved in this situation. They kept several employees on the payroll for months, even after allegations were made involving sexual misconduct or how those sexual misconduct allegations were handled. The district, as you mentioned, also hired a paid communications consultant. In total, this has cost the district well over $100,000. Do you think that this is a good use of taxpayer money, and what, if anything, will you do about this? Dave, do you want to start?
Well, I think everybody would probably say, "Of course, it's a horrible use of tax money." And this is... This is what happens when you cover up. If he would have just been terminated when the superintendent recommended it, and the other people would have been disciplined the way, or fired when he recommended it after the hearing, we wouldn't have had to hire any of those people. This story would have been over. But because we have a board that wants to cover it up, and administration, the story continues. And so we're having to spend money, more money, and more money. So to me, it's not... It is a budget issue, but it's only... If you did the right thing here, we wouldn't even be talking about these expenditures.
Joe, what are your thoughts on the finances of how much this has cost the district? Is that concerning to you as a candidate?
Oh, it's extremely concerning. You know, the other thing, too, here is that, you know, this is an outstanding school system. It really is. And to touch back on what Abby talked about with, you know, salaries of teachers on that question, for us to spend the money that we spent, you know, without what I feel fair representation when the decision was made, I was not there. Like what Abby mentioned, I wasn't there. I don't know what led to the decision. It's a question I will ask. But with that being said, you know, the excuse is made a lot here that, you know, the teacher salaries are where they're at because we're a small school system, and we can't afford that. And, you know, being familiar with how, you know, state board of accounts funds are dispersed and how they're legally used, I can only assume, I don't know for a fact, that the, you know, the funds used to pay these teachers and the extra staff members had to have came from a payroll fund of some sort that we have earmarked for that use. So, you know, for us to sit back on an excuse that we can't afford to pay our teachers better, but yet we can afford to spend money like this frivolously, in my opinion, is beyond me. And then we have a school system that has always been leading in the state in almost every category. We have an outstanding school system with amazing teachers, and we felt the need to integrate a curriculum director for a school system our size that is performing at the level it's performing academically. It really... It causes a lot of questions, and I do expect answers to those when the time comes.
Abby, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, as a taxpayer, as a community member, that is concerning to me, and it didn't make sense with the information that I have. Again, I wasn't there. I don't know what information that they used to make those decisions. I would have loved to have seen that money go back to our teachers that were in the classroom. So, you know, the spending on, you know, surrounding this situation last year didn't make sense, but it's, you know, it's more than that. I think we've paid off our last three superintendents' ended contracts. And so, you know, I think it was before this happened. And so, yeah, the spending is a concern of mine, and it's something that I think we need to look at. We need a review of our budget and make sure that our money is being spent the way our taxpayers would want it to be.
Thank you for pointing that out. I did not include that in my sort of rough math, but when you do total up the impact to the taxpayers, there was a significant payout to the former superintendent who, but it heads with the school board, over this sexual misconduct case, and ended up leaving, taking another job with another district. And that costs taxpayers as well because they're paying for the old superintendent and the interim superintendent as well. So let's talk about... Actually, Dave, I have a question for you. I received from a viewer, and I know you don't mince words, so I'm just going to ask you about it. You were featured on a story with WRTV in which you showed video related to the sexual misconduct case that you took while you were the attendance secretary at the school, which was, in part, one of the reasons that you were fired. Now, you have been praised for doing that and also criticized. Can you talk about why you made that decision to make those recordings?
Yes, it has been a little bit controversial. Most people understand, but some people don't. Once I realized, when I recorded that on my phones from my computer screen, I had access to those videos. They gave me access to all the camera system. So when I realized that the administration was starting to cover things up, I realized those cameras loop over every 30 days. So at that point, as a police officer, it kicks in of, "I better preserve this evidence. Nobody else may be doing it." So I took out my phone, recorded that. Come to find out, no administrator made any effort to recover that evidence. Had I not put that on my phone, much of that would have been past date and would have never been recovered. I released it because after a long period of time, they didn't fire the coach. They were put... The board was putting out a different narrative of what went on. So I wanted the community to see the... A young girl going into a coach's office and the lights going off, and that I wanted them to see what the board saw in that hearing and still decided to keep him.
Before I move on to another question, Joe or Abby, do you want to say anything on this front?
I don't.
Good. Okay. All right. Let's talk about something else. Let's talk about school safety. You know, school shootings, unfortunately, have become an occurrence that we have to talk about all too often. Can you talk about this issue when it comes to Northwest Hendrix? And anything that you will do if you're elected to keep the school safe? Let's start with Joe.
For a long time, I've mentioned I'm an electrician. So for several years, a focus that I had, and it was after the Connecticut shootings, several schools made a big effort, concerted effort, to install secure vestibules and things like that into the schools. The one thing that I did notice early on is Northwest Hendrix, in my opinion, has always done a very good job kind of screening people prior to their access into the building. And that was prior to that. So I do commend us for that, but there's always things that we can do. You know, unfortunately, policies that were fixed to a solution doesn't happen until something's broke. And, you know, security is first and foremost, like what we mentioned earlier. You know, those that walk the halls and instruct our kids and, you know, work there, clean the floors, they're just as important as anybody, and there's always more we can do. I know part of the construction initiative that is in place, the original way that that was presented to the public included another pretty well-thought-out effort to further protect our entryways. But there's always more we can do. I have feelings that are my own personal opinion of what schools should do to deter that. I think areas that are unguarded or unarmed are unsafe, period. So...
What do you think, Abby?
I've always felt that my kids were safe at school here. My kids have gone here since... I've always felt that my kids were safe at school here. My kids have gone here since kindergarten. And so I I don't now have any complaints. As a board member, if someone, you know, brought something to our attention that they felt like was unsafe, then I would definitely address that. Safety of my kids is very important to me. It's very important to people that I know well in this community. And I think that policies have to keep up with technology and social media and things like that. So those are policies that need to be looked at often. But I think that school safety is important to everyone in this community.
Hey, what about you?
Well, I I do think it's important, but I I think this incident that happened last year showed that at least in our high school at that time, our the students weren't safe. And I I'm going to bring up the interesting point, I think, in a little different direction is the Kentucky Center for School Safety. They did research about 109 districts in Kentucky and they came up with six things that they thought were the the reason for for safety being jeopardized in the school. The the top two had nothing to do with the building security, with the policy, with issues to do with like police presence. The top two all had to do with relationship. And the top one was the lack of teacher-staff connection with the students. And here's, I saw this happen at this at Tri-West this last year was the lack of connection and relationships built with the students. We didn't listen to the students. The students knew about this way prior to the adults and they spoke about it. And they even put in tip lines about it, but we didn't listen to them. We didn't have those relationships built. This is why, one reason I believe with teachers, that it's so important that we don't overload them like we're overloading them right now with two jobs at school is because what we remove is that time to get the know the student by name, to to identify at-risk students. And that goes for school shootings, that goes for sexual misconduct, is the kids always know first. And we got to listen to them.
Thank you. Uh, let's talk about COVID-19. I mean, after all, that is the the hot topic. We were six months into this pandemic. How do you feel the the school district is is handling COVID-19? And would you do anything differently if you're elected? Abby?
I've been proud of how our school district has handled COVID-19, honestly. I'm glad that our kids are going to school. I think that kids need that, if it's at all possible. My kids were a little disappointed about some of the restrictions, you know, not being able to be at recess with all of their friends and lunch with all of their friends. And, you know, wearing the mask was hard at first, but I think the school is handling it well. And we're, you know, quarantining kids when needed. And, you know, we're all ready for this to go over, but, you know, we have to put the kids' safety first. And so I I think we're we're doing well. We're doing what we can do with the guidelines.
Joe?
You know, I I know for a fact that in the elementary schools right now, we're we're talking about overloading the teachers. Another part of their daily routine is they have to clean desks, they have to clean their classrooms. They're scrubbing things, they're wiping doorknobs down, they're flat surfaces. You know, they're really making a a heavy push. And to my knowledge, I think the the numbers, if any, in the elementary schools has been very minimal because they're really enforcing that hard. I think the high schools had a few more, but nothing crazy that we've heard from other districts around here. There was a neighboring district that had a, I think it was like 150 students at one time quarantined. And there's been a couple that we've received emails about here in the last, you know, couple of weeks or so. But it's not been too difficult. But I I do want to look at the policy as far as how we are enforcing when they consider someone exposed and and then look at, you know, the state's, you know, recommendations of masks, social distancing, and then take that into effect or account when we're we're choosing students to quarantine. I think we're, you know, excusing a a massive amount of people that if they are properly spaced and they're masked up, I think until they present symptoms, I don't think we should be removing them from school. I mean, that's, that's the last thing. It's it's pretty clear. I mean, this is a community that's remote. Not a lot of people have the best internet. Not a lot of people have the best resources. We're still trying to battle the one-to-one with our e-learning. And it's it's something that I really think that we need to take a hard look at as far as, you know, when we're making a choice to send these kids home or not. Just because they were sitting next to somebody that tested positive, they were both masked up and they were both spaced apart. I mean, I thought, I think that's the point of all of that. So that would be something I would like to see is is kind of a review of that and and maybe a change on that that side.
Thank you. I think we can all agree that teachers are are the unsung heroes. They have so much that's been put on their plate and then e- even more, I mean, throughout the state. Dave, any thoughts on on COVID-19 and how the school district's been handling it? Would you do anything different if elected?
Yeah, it was today, in fact, I was looking at a page on Pittsburgh, open forum on Facebook. And the the concerns differ so much from parent to parent, from situation to situation. For instance, I I'm a single dad. But right now, I'm able to stay home with them for now. But there's times I haven't been able to. So what about the single parents that have to go to work but cannot take off work? And we tell them, hey, you're going to do school from home. Well, how is that an option for them? Then you have the the people that can do it or that have, let's say, somebody has in their family has a medical condition and they they have to keep them home. So there's so many situations. And I think honestly, in my opinion, it's not just Tri-West High School. It's, I think, as a country, we can't shut school down. We we can't just shut the schools down. Safety is not the top priority. Good education is. I was a police officer. Everybody said safety first. No, no. Doing your job and the public's safety is first. Education's first, and we need to find a way to do it safely that works for the teachers, the parents, and everybody in the community.
Thank you so much. So much good information. I'm just about done. So hopefully you guys have your water to to, we're in the home stretch. When you think back to the past year or so and everything that's happened over the past 18 months, what do you think are the most important lessons that the school district or the community should have learned? And what do you plan to do with that information? I'll start with you, Dave.
Well, I I think the obvious one we learned in the last 18 months as far as with the situation with the coach is that all the laws, the policies, the practices cannot overcome. If you cannot, cannot work if you don't have character and you're not ready to do the right thing. Culture and character beat rules and policies every day of the week. And I think one that what I learned from it is we did not have a culture. We had the rules in place. They knew they were mandated reporters, but we didn't have the culture to say, we're not going to tolerate this behavior. And one thing I want, I want to change that culture by look at, in the best example I could use for my last thing is look at COVID. If we had half or a quarter of the response to sexual misconduct in the schools as we have to COVID, we would solve it. And we've got to, we've got to come up with better ways to handle this and educate, listen, educate the parents. When's the last time you've gotten a a letter home that that teaches you to look for grooming? If the students, if your students being groomed, educate the the students. Give the hotline, they have a tip line, anonymous tip line. Maybe we need to, if we ever have sexual misconduct, maybe we need to have the state police come and investigate. We got to find a way to to treat this seriously and come up with better leaders to implement that.
Great. Joe, I saw you nodding a little bit. What do you think are are the lessons that we should have learned from the past 18 months? And and what do you plan to do with that info?
Taking a hard look at the culture is something that I've talked to several people about. You know, I I came from a small community. You know, we had, we had a culture there. I I love that community. That community is a great community. But it really catered to to the athletes, to the sports and to the success thereof. And, you know, to my knowledge, there really hasn't been scandals like this there. But, you know, pushing on past that, we do have a culture issue here. And it's also, in my opinion, morality of that culture. We've, we've got to find a way, like what Dave said, to 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 look back on this. We need to, we need to be able to look back on this and figure out where where the breakdown occurred. And I and I think it's, it's, you know, quickly becoming clear where that happened, which is why we're all here. But, you know, it it is spring boarding totally on what Dave just said. We've got to establish a culture that is is one that has a system of accountability for the for actions. You know, it it's, it's going to be hard for any of us to have a crystal ball. Every bad guy or or bad person, I guess, had the first time they were a bad person. So, you know, it it's hard for us to predict that. But, you know, and and it's also hard to do character screening, you know, with with regards to to hiring practices. But there are some them, some tools that can be utilized, some processes. My work uses some processes that identify personality traits that that ensure the success of the placement of the position you're looking for. It can tell us everything where that person's going to struggle, where they're going to succeed. I would like to see some of those things implemented here. That way, we can not only place people properly, but we also ensure the success or help ensure the success of that that person when they're in that position. So lessons to take away from this, I really think, are we need to take a hard look at our culture.
Abby? But both, both of these other guys are talking about a culture change. Is that what you think or something different?
Well, I know that there's, that our school system is filled with good moral people that want the best for our kids and and for our community. The situation last year, I I I don't have all of the facts. I know that. I know that mistakes were made. I know that it wasn't handled quickly. I don't think that it was handled appropriately. I think that we can have policies in place and then hold people accountable for following those policies. And we can't be, we can't let people get away with just a little bit of not following it and then some people not having to follow it. Everybody has to follow it and there has to be consequences if not. And those consequences and disciplinary actions have to be documented. We have to have a clear, transparent hiring process and, you know, try to reach out to other places and attract, you know, you know, teachers and coaches and make sure that that there are evaluations done of these teachers and coaches and make sure that those are documented. And so I I don't know about a culture issue. I think that that there was an issue here. I think that things were overlooked and that that mistakes were made and that our community is definitely going to learn from this. I think the community is less trusting of the board right now, which is sad. But at the same time, I think that, you know, community involvement is going to increase and people are are going to get involved and ask questions. And I think that that's good. You know, so I I think that we can turn this around and that we can get policies in place to protect our kids from things like this.
Thank you so much. Such good answers all the way around. Thank you so much. And just to remind everybody that's tuned in, who we have here with us, it's Abby Morgan and David Pyatt, who are both running against the incumbent and board president, Jim DiAgostino. And Joe Brooks is the sole challenger who's taking on incumbent Craig Peoples. We did invite Jim and Craig, the incumbents, to join us tonight. However, they did not respond to us and we thank you guys so much for making the time in your busy schedules to talk to us. Most of the questions that I've asked tonight were submitted through members of the community. So these are all questions that people in, that voters want to know. And so I appreciate you taking the time to do that. I'm going to leave it for all of you to sort of give a closing statement. And and because all of you, you know, are are pushing for increased transparency, increased accountability, increased communication, maybe you just point out one of the things that makes you different from your opponents. And obviously Abby and David are running against each other. But so, Joe, you can talk about how you're different from Abby and Dave or how you're different from your your opponent. But just talk to me about in closing, why someone should vote for you and what makes you different? I'll let you start, Joe.
Well, the the one thing I'm not going to do, and I know you're not asking me to do that, is is to point out shortcomings or or whatever in my opponent. I'm 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 simply not going to go there. I will say that something that that you're going to get with me is the fact that I'm going to ask questions. I'm going to ask tough questions and I'm not going to sit there and 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 nod my head or or, you know, just not ask them. When when given the opportunity to do the right thing, I'm going to take that road every time. You know, the the other thing too is is that, you know, I am 100% focused on trying to figure out how we can build the community, what we can do, steps that we can take to reinstate the trust. Abby mentioned trust, that's huge. It's right now, it's it's definitely strained. You know, we've got two different sides, people that that still completely trust the school board. I do have a question and I I really wish that the that the current, the incumbent members would have have been here tonight. And and I believe I'm going to have that opportunity here in the future at another forum. Is, you know, I I want to know what their thoughts are and what their plans are to reinstate the trust in the community and, you know, how how they they feel that if they maintain their position, they're going to be able to do that. So that that's a question that I've got. You know, the other thing is, is that, you know, my my construction background, we are heading into a huge construction initiative and I'm going to be able to look at that. I'm a numbers guy. That's on my platform. So, you know, I'm, there's questions I'm going to ask and and it may be very well thought out. I haven't had an opportunity to go through everything, but I look forward to that.
Okay, Dave, talk to me about why should people vote for you? What makes you different?
Well, I I think what I'd start with is there's a, you know, in the community, if you know me, some people say, well, at times he's abrasive. What I would tell the community is, you're right, I'm not going to win Mr. Congeniality. What separates me is I'm going to say it like it is. And I know when to fight. And I can't, and I can be a fighter for the teachers right now to make sure they get what they want, as though I can be, I can be abrasive at times. But who do you want in there as your voice? Whether it's for the kids' safety, whether I'm, whether to the parents out there that feel like their situation is unique and they need a voice? Who do you want as your voice? Who do you want in there to make sure that they're heard and is not going away? And that's me.
Abby, you get the last word.
Okay. And so I would say I give, I provide an option here after this very trying time that we've had and the emotions are very high surrounding this election, especially, you know, for the seat that Dave and I are running for. But I feel that I provide an option for those community members who want to pick up and move on together. Whether whoever did everything right or wrong, I feel like that the that the other two being on the board will make it hard for this community to heal. I think I'm running because I've been interested in running in the school, for the school board for a long time. And I think the school board should look like a slice of our community. It should include people that can represent different people in our community. And the people on the school board should have differing views. I agree with that. So that, so we can come up with a good solution. But I see a need for those people, this community, to have someone on the board that they know that they can trust, that they know has the kids' best interest at heart. And I believe that I provide that. I believe that my many community involvements makes me accessible to people in this community. And so I, and I've talked to lots of people. I know what the people want. They want their kids to be safe at school. They want to know that their tax dollars are being used wisely. And they want to know that the people they elected to be on the board are working for them. And I can do that.
All right. Thank you so much, Abby, Joe, Dave. I appreciate your time. I know you guys are all super busy and hopefully everyone gets out and and vote. I I know that early voting is starting pretty soon here. I believe it's October 6th. You know, get to the polls, cast your ballots. This is a very important race to the community. All of you have said how divided and and broken the community is and and needs to heal. And so obviously you have three challengers that are are taking on that challenge of of trying to bring the community back together. So thank you so much for your time. This will be recorded, put on the WR TV Facebook page and we'll have it online on our website and our app as well. So thanks, everyone, and have a good night.